So we've been working for the last three years or so on a research project supported by WorkSafe Victoria and we have a lot of stakeholders in this research. We want to acknowledge them and one of the wonderful things about this project has been that there's been a lot of interest in it. But we can't do research unless people, perhaps people like yourselves, agree to complete questionnaires or agree to be interviewed and share your practical experience because we're just academics. We need to work with people in the field to understand how the research can work in practice, to understand how the theory can be applied. So we had a range of people who were extremely helpful in this project and we're very grateful to them. Now, at the core of this project was an interest from WorkSafe Victoria in finding out whether we could have a good, simple, clear measure of things that you can do in your workplace to prevent injuries and illnesses from happening. Around the world, there's a lot of interest in what they call leading indicators. They're what are the things that are steps that can be taken in the workplace to prevent injuries and illnesses from happening? WorkSafe Victoria have a strategy and prevention arm that really work to, in many of the same ways as Better Work Tasmania are working, to say, "What can we do to prevent things from happening? What are the proactive ways that we can keep people safe and healthy at work?" And the idea is that these leading indicators, the things we can do in the workplaces, will lead to better outcomes. We'll act to prevent or to reduce at least injuries and illnesses being experienced by people in the workplace. So if you think about your own workplace, what are the things you do that keep you healthy and safe at work? That's what these lead indicators are about. What are the steps that are taken that are really important? What are the ways in which you provide resources? What are the resources, training, equipment, that are available for people to put in place to do their jobs? And you can see there's a whole lot of researchers working around the world. People in, excuse me, people in Finland, in the US, in Canada, as well as Australia, New Zealand, all over the place. There's a really strong push to move away from counting lost time injuries to understanding what's caused them in the first place. So if you think about your own workplaces, these are the kinds of areas we're talking about when we mean leading indicators. You might have really specific indicators in mind. So if we look at the top box around systems and policies and procedures, you might think, "Oh, well, in my workplace, we've got a great policy on, if it's a hospital, on lifting patients or not lifting patients without using the equipment." Or in transport sector, we've got a great set of procedures around hours worked and how we manage fatigue, all those sorts of policies. Whatever industry you're in, having those systems and policies in place are fantastic, but they're only part of the picture. I've seen lots of workplaces where they have beautiful policies and nobody sticks to them. Nobody knows about them. Nobody thinks about them. They're not in full compliance. So they're one part of the picture, but they're not sufficient to keep everyone safe. We also need management commitment and leadership. People can be pretty cynical in their workplaces. If they're being told to stay safe, but they really feel like management are telling them to do the job and do it at all costs to meet the deadline, then they'll not be likely to behave. Managers need to work as role models. I talked to one health and safety manager who told me about working in a bank. They had an evacuation drill, a fire drill, and everybody had to leave their offices and desks and workstations and go outside to the evacuation point. The bank's senior executives didn't leave because they were too important to have their work interrupted by a drill. CEO said to the health and safety manager, "What do you think? How are we going?" And he said, "If the managers aren't modelling the safety behaviour, how can you expect everyone else to follow?" So the next time they had the drill, the CEO took the names of everybody who evacuated and went around to the senior executives and said, "You're not modelling safety behaviour for the workers. We're going to be keeping an eye on you." That is how you can start to do things, to change cultures, holding people accountable for their safety behaviour, ensuring that people get a clear message. And it's not just the senior executives. I heard from so many people who say, "Senior management are great. We have terrific health and safety people, but my supervisor, let me tell you about my supervisor, could not care less about health and safety." So where there's a mismatch, that's a really undermining feature in a workplace. That stops us from doing what we'd like to do to keep people healthy and safe. So supervisors play a really important role. Prioritising health and safety. In some industries, health and safety is just as important as productivity and all the other goals of the organisation. It's seen as a strategic issue. In other industries, health and safety of the workers can come kind of somewhere down the line. And we see this quite often in caring industries where in healthcare, people say, "Patient safety is what we really are here for. We hear about the patients and health and safety comes somewhere behind." In education, "We're here for the kids. We have to look after the kids." Teachers don't want to report an incident because there'll be a whole range of issues if there's a problem with the child who's perhaps behaved in a way that's unsafe for the teacher's work. So looking at how we prioritise safety, whether it's okay to talk about safety is important. Okay, in your workplace, do you have regular inspections and audits? Are the forklifts checked? Is the equipment checked? And what happens if there's a problem with the equipment or with the procedures? Is corrective action taken? Do you improve things? Now, ticking this off in your minds, do we do this in our workplace? Because the more things you do of these, the safer your workplace actually will be. Do you manage the risk? Do you control the risk? Do you have risk profiling? Do you involve the workers in discussions and decisions around health and safety? That comes through in all the research as a really strong and powerful way to keep them safe. In one of the mine sites that we visited for this research in Far North Queensland, as it happened, the day before we turned up, someone had his foot crushed by a massive piece of equipment. And so that had to stop the production, which cost them a lot of money. He'd been taken off to hospital. He was actually all right. But the whole work team were focused on figuring out what had gone wrong. And so because production was stopped, what they did was they got their iPhones, oh, sorry, their non-name brand specific smartphone piece of equipment, yeah, and they were reenacting what had happened to try and figure out what had gone wrong with him. And what they realised was they were levering in this bit of equipment and there was a rope in the way. And he kicked out his foot to move the rope. Instinctive, you know? But there was nothing to stop him putting out his foot and his foot got crushed. So it was the work team who were going, "Hang on, we have to fix this. We have to figure out the way to make this not happen to anyone else." Empowerment. They knew that they could put that to their supervisor, they could talk about ways of improving it, and they could improve things. And to me, you know, they were wonderful guys. They all had their names on their badges, as they do. One guy was Happy. No one actually knew what Happy's real name was. Happy was a very large guy. Nobody wanted to ask him what his real name was. But Happy was the safety officer for that group and he was terrific. And his role was to keep people focused on safety. Those sorts of really practical measures are in some workplaces just not done. People are too scared to talk about safety. People feel there'll be a backlash or they'll be seen as a troublemaker or if they're casual that they might lose their job or they might not get as many shifts. Or there's workforce restructuring going on and somebody's going to lose their job and if I cause a problem, it might be me. Or it's just too hard to fill in the forms, so I don't want to speak up. I haven't, I'm already overloaded, haven't got the time to fill in the form. There's a whole range of reasons why people sometimes don't speak up about health and safety, but when they do, it's better. It's okay to have people reporting, reporting hazards, reporting near misses, reporting what happens. Because unless you know what's happening, unless you're measuring it, you can't manage it. Once you're measuring it, once you've got the evidence and the information, then you can start to manage it. So communicate about health and safety. Give them the training, the information, the resources, the tools. When we did some research with teachers, early childhood and kindergarten teachers, you know what one of their common problems is? They have to sit on the chairs that the kids sit on. They're adults sitting in little kids' chairs all the time. And that causes some of their, you know, musculoskeletal problems because they're not given adult-sized chairs. Now, for many of us, being expected to go and do a job where you don't have adult-sized equipment, you'd think of as ridiculous, but for them, it's the norm. So there's a whole range of issues in different industries about what people have to work with and that have probably pretty simple solutions that we could use to improve their health and safety. Holding people accountable, like the CEO in the bank saying to people, "You're accountable for health and safety. We're watching your behaviour, you know, we want to know that you're staying safe." And giving people positive feedback when they do behave safely, when they do make suggestions or solutions about health and safety in the workplace. All of those steps can help to keep people safe. So if nothing else, that's my message for today, but there is more. Our aim was to say, knowing all those things are important, is there a way that you could measure that? Wouldn't it be cool if we could have a simple and practical way to measure those leading indicators so that you could find out whether your workplaces are doing well? Now, we wanted a simple, practical tool and it is a measure of people's perceptions that we're looking for. It's, if you ask someone about their workplace, "How well do I think we're going on all of those health and safety measures?" So we did a literature review because academics like to do that. We searched around the world to see what was already done. And we found a group of Canadian researchers who'd already been working on this for a couple of years. So rather than reinvent the wheel, we joined with the Canadians and said, "We'll test what you've been doing and see whether it applies in Australia." Because Canada's different from Australia. They say things like "moose" and "hoose". So we wanted to find out whether it works here. So what we've done is to look at a measure that they call the Organisation Performance Metric or the OPM. It's a very strange name for a tool that's about health and safety. Possibly a little grandiose, but it's a great tool, a great name. It's really just a set of eight statements that ask you things like, "Are formal audits regularly done in the workplace?" That's not the right wording, but it's something like that. "Does everyone have the training and equipment they need to do their job properly?" "A management in this workplace committed to health and safety." So eight statements and people are asked to score from one through to five. So you've got a maximum score of forty. High score means, "I think this workplace is doing better on those leading indicators." So the first thing we did was to do a survey with over fourteen hundred Victorian workplaces where we just asked the health and safety manager or the health and safety rep, "How do you think your organisation's going on those eight items of the OPM?" And we found that the OPM actually was a reliable and valid indicator. All the statistical stuff worked out really well. It works. And we did make some amendments to it, changing from what the Canadians were doing to things that seemed to work better. So for example, the Canadians had focused on safety. And when we did around fifty interviews with people, they said, "Well, really, it's about health and safety. We want people to think more broadly than just physical safety. We want them to think about health and safety." So we asked them, "Are health and safety audits done in your workplace, not are safety audits done?" Now, you can use this tool by asking the health and safety manager or a health and safety rep to report on their workplace. And that's the way it's been used in Canada. They've done quite a lot of testing of it in Canada and in North America as well. And it works. But one of the things we found was that when you ask the managers, they tend to give a bit more of a positive response than when you ask the health and safety rep. Funny about that. If you want to get a positive story out of your workplace, just ask the managers because they're the ones who've put in place the policies. They think they're working really well. Of course they do. That's fine. It just won't be the same as if you ask people who didn't write the policy. We also matched up their responses using an identifier for each workplace against the number of claims that had been put in, work cover claims. And we found a relationship. Workplaces that had a lower score on lead indicators had put in more claims over the last three to five years. So it's got some relationship with claims, but you know, claims are really rare. And there's a lot of stuff that happens between someone getting injured in a workplace and a work cover claim. So claims are not actually a great measure. I'm all about the measures. I love measuring things. Claims are not a really useful measure for us. So we wanted to look further into this. We decided to go into workplaces. So we went to six large Australian employers, six industries, sixty-six workplaces. You've got the number of the devil coming up. We won't go there. Three thousand six hundred and five responses. Thirty-five percent response rate, Angela. I know I'd love a better response rate than that, but that's what happens when we ask people to complete surveys in organisations. Next time someone asks you to complete a questionnaire, please do it. We rely on you. Managers, the ones in the suits, we've got enough of those to be able to do analyses. Supervisors, they're the ones kind of looking happier than the managers do, more casual. And workers, people actually doing the work. Another way of looking at the sample, about sixty-one percent of them were male. We didn't have anyone in Tasmania, so Pamela has to pick up, you know, "You're going to have to do the work here and you already are", and across those industries. The survey did include that eight-item questionnaire, the OPM that I talked about, but we also measured a few other things so that we could do testing and see what it links in with and what else is important. And then we followed up with the workplaces and got their lost time injury data and their injury rates so that we could see whether what people said was happening in their workplace was predictive or related to the number of accidents that actually happen. What did we find? Here's this eight-item scale. Now, forty is the best possible score you can get. That'd be a perfect score. Just about nobody got a perfect score. What we did find was that we could see differences across the industries. Not huge differences, but this could be used to do some benchmarking across different industries to see whether something is being well-managed or not so well-managed in the industries. You can see mining was a bit above average, healthcare was a bit below average. When we look at the responses by employment level, this is what I was suggesting earlier. The managers gave the most positive kind of responses. That was significantly different from the responses the supervisors gave. They were a little more, well, a little less positive, a little more negative about the leading indicators. And the employees were, well, let's just say the managers were like little rays of sunshine. The employees rained a little on their parade in not quite having the same positive view of health and safety indicators in their workplaces. So if you ever want to run a survey or a questionnaire, just ask the managers if you want a good score. If you can cope with the bad news, then ask everybody what they think about how you're managing. Now, we also looked at each organisation. The organisations that we had didn't quite line up with the industry. Some were multi-industries, so that's why we can also look across organisations. The first organisation, Organisation A, had a score on this OPM above average. That's a mining company. It's a company that's giving a lot of attention to its health and safety. But you can see it's a high-risk industry. They're not getting a perfect score by any means, but they are paying a lot of attention to health and safety. Their people are getting the message about health and safety. They're above average at least. Organisation B, I've painted it red, that's actually an arts and recreation industry company. I'm not naming them, but they were not performing well. And it's interesting, this organisation D is also arts and recreation. So two organisations in the same industry had very different approaches to health and safety. Got very different scores. Now, we wanted to look a little more at Organisation B because they weren't doing so well. But this does show you could compare across organisations and benchmark. Within Organisation B, we can see that some of their workplaces were doing quite well. They were above the average. The ones that were not doing so well, when we looked down at the type of work they were doing, they were the ones where there were casual workers. And those workers were actually, it wasn't really a set workplace. They were being sent out to host organisations. And Organisation B didn't control everything that happened to those workers. They had to go and work for another organisation and they weren't as safe as people in other parts of the organisation were. Now, the way this company is using the feedback we've given them is that they're working with the client host organisations and saying, "We'll share with you our policies, our practices. We'll try and bring you up to the standards that we think our workers deserve in managing health and safety." So they're using this to start the conversation about how they can prevent injuries and illnesses from happening. To start the conversation about what kind of leading indicators should be put in place in different workplaces. So you could use this inside an organisation to try and identify hotspots or groups that are more at risk in your workforce. Groups where there's perhaps less enactment or carry-through of your policies and leading indicators. Now, so that was about the OPM. It does tell us something about how people perceive their leading indicators in their workplace. But we also wanted to know whether more attention to leading indicators would lead to reduced injuries and illnesses. So we asked people to report on their own experience of incidents and we also asked the workplace, three months later, to report on the number of injuries, lost time injury frequency rate, medically-treated injury frequency rate. Some of the interesting things about this is, a lot of organisations, a lot of companies, a lot of senior executives focus on the lost time injury frequency rate. They talk about LTIs, LTIFRs. Yeah, everybody talks about their LTIFRs. And they don't think of looking at all the other measures. But if you just look at this slide, you can see hazards, incidents that were reported to a manager, near misses that were reported, they give you other information that's really useful as well. If you gather near misses, you're much more likely to identify things that could lead to an accident happening, an injury, an illness happening before it actually happens. We want people to report hazards. Hazard reporting is really good. Near miss reporting is really good. If you've got an organisation with a high reporting rate, that's actually not a bad thing. That means people feel comfortable. They know they can report. We don't want people to have zero reporting just because they're too scared to report or they think they might win a TV if there's no incident reported this month. That's not a good way to run the show. We want hazards to be reported. Reporting is good. And then what you should see is that over time, you know how to manage those and the rates will change. But don't just rely on lost time injuries because that doesn't give you enough of a picture about what's going on in your workplace. But what we do know, if you want to use it as a measure, that OPM score does predict your lost time injury rate. So you don't have to wait for people to get injured to do something about it. If you pay attention to the things you can control, those leading indicators, systems, training, communication, resources, equipment, audits, accountability, all those factors are things you can control in a workplace. And in organisations where they are perceived to be giving more attention to those, there are fewer lost time injuries and fewer medically-treated injuries happening. These lead indicators, it works. As our Canadian collaborator said, "It's kind of freaky, Helen. It works." Yeah, that's why we like them. They're fun. So we also wanted to find out some other things. Does leadership matter? Because we kept talking to managers who said, "Well, you know, surely my leadership is important." Yes, your leadership is important. We asked the managers and supervisors to fill in an extra little bit of a questionnaire. We asked them to fill in a little measure of their own health and safety leadership. So if you're a manager or a supervisor, do you talk to your people regularly about health and safety? Do you ensure that the policies are put in place and they're complied with? Do you have comprehensive policies in your workplace? So we asked them a set of questions about their own leadership. Do you feel you're a good role model as a health and safety person? Whether you're in a health and safety management role or not. If you're in management, you're modelling behaviour for everyone else in the workplace. And in workplaces where the leader said, "Yeah, actually, I do talk about health and safety. It is on every meeting. We do care. People know that safety is first", they had fewer injuries and illnesses. We also found, are you familiar with this idea of transactional and transformational leaders? So transactional leadership is where you do really concrete, tangible steps. So the people see that you're interested in safety. So you wear the high-vis vest, you wear the equipment, you talk to people about health and safety all the time. That's really important. Transformational leadership is where the CEO says, "We care about people. Health and safety is paramount in our organisation." Now, that kind of inspirational stuff is great, but it's not enough. You have to get out there and walk the talk as well. They're both important, but, and this is based on a number of meta-analyses done by, you know, researchers in other parts of the world, we know that you need a combination. Because workers get a bit cynical if they just see the CEO giving the message, but their own supervisor is saying, "We've got a deadline to meet. Forget about the safety equipment. Just do the work." They need to see safety, both in practice as well as being just in the message. We also wanted to think about what else happens in workplaces. Now, these leading indicators, if you think back to all those boxes on the slide, they're all about what the organisation can do to keep people safe. You can give them the resources, you can give them the training, you can have policies. But we also need people to behave safely. And individuals are part of the whole picture. What we found was that in workplaces that had a really high score, above thirty-six out of forty on the OPM, were those were organisations where there were fewer incidents. But if they also had high safety compliance, that is, the employee said, "I wear my equipment. I follow the rules. I follow the procedures", then the incidents were the lowest. They really went down significantly reduced. Eighty-two percent chance of no incidents happening. So it's not just about having the lead indicators in place. We also need to get people to buy into it. That's why the consultation, communication involving employees in the decision-making about safety, that's really important because then it becomes part of the way of doing things in the workplace. The lead indicators do have a direct impact on the outcomes, the injuries and illnesses. But it's also, for those of you statistically minded, it's partially mediated through, it also is associated through the employee behaviours. So as a quick example, I live with a husband, a teenage daughter and two cats. I have a range of safety and health policies in our workhouse, workplace, house, residence. They're not always followed. So the middle-aged husband, about a month ago, when I wasn't home, the supervisor was not in place, he decided to do some gardening. He climbed a ladder and became one of the many middle-aged men with a broken wrist, injury from falling from a ladder. Now, as we all know, there's a lot of research on why middle-aged men should not be allowed to climb ladders on their own. So even though I have my leading indicators in place, I have spent years talking to him over the dinner table about health and safety, I haven't managed to control his behaviour. And I'd have to say, the husband is more easily controlled than the teenage daughter or the two cats. So goodness knows what I've got ahead of me because she's only just entering the teenage years. We can control so much with our leading indicators, but we've also got to get people to buy into it, to remember, to comply. That's how we have healthy workplaces. That's how we have healthy workplaces and residences as well. Now, most of our sample got in the kind of mid-range on the OPM. So about fifty-six percent or so of the workplaces scored in the middle of the range. In the university context, they were getting kind of credits or distinctions or, you know, second-class honours. Not many of them got first-class honours in managing their lead indicators. We'd like more of them too. But the ones that are getting the kind of middle range, we found that if they could also manage workloads, they could reduce injuries and illnesses. And when we look at the ones that are really scoring low, they're getting a fail really on their leading indicators, they're not giving enough attention to their leading indicators. And workload was high. People said, I have to work too hard to get all my work done, I have to work too fast, I have too much work to do and I can't complete it within my shift. When those sorts of overload factors were reported by the respondents, sixty-three percent chance of getting injured at work. So it's kind of the flip side of what we see at the top. So it's not just about the attention to health and safety in the workplace, it's not just about leading indicators about health and safety. We also need to look at how the work is structured. Are people too overloaded? Can they actually get their jobs done? Because that will just compound the problems if they're not. If they're overloaded, they'll be stressed, they won't be paying enough attention because they just can't do it. We've overloaded their system and incidents are more likely to happen. So when you think about managing health and safety, it's part of the whole system. You've got to work with the HR department as well and look at things like rostering systems. Got to talk to your supervisors and give them the training and resources to think about how to manage people's workloads as well as managing their health and safety specific areas. So what does this tell us? First of all, we want, we want a culture shift really, is what we're talking about. We want to shift the focus from counting the incidents and from counting the cost of health and safety. That is important. Because if you go to the board and say, this is how much it's costing us, of course you'll get their attention when there are dollar signs attached. But the way of managing that is to look at our work practices. What are we doing in lead indicators to reduce injuries and illnesses, to prevent them? What's our leadership? What are our supervisors telling our workers about health and safety? What are the resources we're offering in terms of equipment, training, audits, information? So that we can measure our health and safety and put improvements in place. Now, this OPM, this eight-item tool, could be used. You could use it in an employee attitude survey that you run with the workforce. You could just ask your health and safety reps to complete it. That'd give you at least a picture of what they're seeing. You could look at each of the items and see which ones you're giving more attention to than others, which ones perhaps your people think that you're not giving enough attention to. You could identify areas of improvement. You could look at groups at risk. So as we saw across different workplaces within organisation B, you could identify areas where there's perhaps, you know, more targeted intervention that could be done. It could help you to think about the steps. Is it about training people? Is it about giving resources to them? What can we do to invest? Because investing upfront is just spending the money in a different way from dealing with the cost of their injuries later on. Let's invest it upfront instead. And you could use it to benchmark across different workplaces, benchmark across different parts of your workforce, understand which groups might be more likely to need attention so that you add it to your suite of tools, add it to the whole toolkit you've got for dealing with health and safety in the workplace. And if you like more information, there are some more reports. Because we're academics, we're always writing reports, nobody ever reads them. Not even sure my mum ever read any of the reports that I've written. But anyway, if you want to, you're welcome to read the reports. There are some already up there and there are more that'll be going up later this week or early next week. And that email address comes through to me and you're very welcome to contact me if you've got any questions about it. Now, these slides, I've just realised I should have told you, the slides will be available somehow. Pamela will do all the magic and make sure that if you want the slides, you can, yes. Or email me if you want a copy of them and I'm happy to send them to you as well. And I'm certainly happy to take any questions, if anyone's got any questions or any comments. Really welcome your thoughts and whether this makes sense in Tasmania. Thank you. Question over there, yes?
Helen, just wondering whether you've had a chance to go back to some of the workplaces and see if they probably earlier in the process and see if they do what they progress with the information you gave.
Anecdotally, yes, they've used it as part of the information that they're working on. We know that in one organisation, for example, this was the first time they'd done a kind of survey of this sort of their workforce. And the health and safety manager used this information to go to the board to get certain resourcing put in place. So it's been used in a range of different ways. In another organisation, they were already pretty well advanced with what they were doing and they've built this in as part of a kind of better work approach. Certainly in some of the mines, they already had a lot of information, but this has been added into their evidence base. So, you know, in the mines, they, they could look at the shifts and they knew that incidents are more likely to happen towards the end of the shift. And if someone's on a three-week on roster, more likely to happen towards the end of that, more likely to happen at night, more likely to happen. They cannot, they have such great databases, such great attention to detail in some sites. And this becomes part of what they're doing. Look, ideally, we'd love people to keep using this so you could track yourselves over time, do it on an annual basis as part of your other employee surveys. And you'd be able to see whether you could have targeted interventions in a workplace and improve it for them and change the circumstances for them. Yeah, so it could absolutely be used and it's been used in a number of different ways in the, in the organisations we've worked with. We did also do a survey with the Australian Nursing and Midwifery Federation in Victoria. And we know that that particular piece of work is being used as part of the evidence base for the discussion with the Department of Health and Human Services and with the union's campaign against issues such as occupational violence in healthcare. So that's some of the ways in which the research is getting into the conversation about health and safety. Yes?
Were the ready manufacturing respond, you've hidden in there under another category of oil and gas or any, you know, were they undermining or was there just no inventory? Did you have any?
It's a loaded question. Did we have any manufacturing in Victoria? Yeah. Not in this group, but our next project is including manufacturing. So we are collecting data on these issues in manufacturing right now and that'll go over the next eighteen months or so. So we will capture in there. Oil and gas, no, we haven't. But, you know, it's a really interesting question. You know, the more that we gather the information about this, the more you could develop norms and you could get a better picture of what actually is a good score. What's okay? Is thirty-six or above where we need to head or is thirty-one kind of good enough? Is it okay to get a credit? Do you have to get a high distinction for every subject? So this is really early phase, early stage, but where it could head is towards something that can look across all industries and provide you with information to know what it's like in that industry. Because, you know, what happens in mining is very different from manufacturing and very different from what happens in healthcare.
Well, that's just it, the mining scored quite high because they would have a lot more focus and resources.
Absolutely.
Safety than the arts and the recreation people would.
Yes. Yeah.
And manufacturing would be somewhere in between.
Yes. We do know from the research in manufacturing and in some of the work sites we've done, where there's, where there's workforce restructuring, where people know that there's a chance that they might not have a job, that really influences how they perceive their workplace. And so already we, we know that the indications are they'll get lower scores where there's precarious workforce restructuring going on. We also know that in industries like healthcare, emergency workers, people where you're dealing with the public, they can't control all of their work, you know. And so it's much harder for them to manage all of the issues that might influence. If you're an ambulance driver, enforcement officer, working in schools even, you're dealing with the public and it's very different from working in a manufacturing sector where you can control a lot more. But each industry has their own issues and it's understanding what's important within that industry or workplace that'll really help you to know, well, okay, that's us, how do we now fix it? What do we now do? Yeah.
My question relates to that. Have you categorised the injury types across different industries?
We haven't, no, because it would be great, but when you ask people to fill in a questionnaire, we have a really limited amount of time. And look, what we did in a lot of the workplaces was to turn up in their toolbox meetings and they very graciously gave us time in the toolbox to hand out questionnaires. In the mine sites, we took pens with us and handed them out because we had to think about ways of getting people to complete a questionnaire. It had to be pretty tight so that it didn't take up too much time. And so, no, we haven't asked all the questions we would love to ask. In the surveys that we've done with union members, where we emailed a survey to nurses and to teachers, we have got information about the specific kind of injuries. And stress comes out very highly for teachers, for example. It's one of the major sources, yeah, of stress, of injuries. Yeah. Yes?
I've been using positive indicators for quite years and can confirm what you're saying at this, I've found exactly the same thing. The last couple of years in a large department, I took it to a more refined tie by working with each branch manager just to measure what they had in their own areas. Then I went back after eighteen months, well, from the original measures, gave them their action list, gave them my ideas on how to address those things. But then when I went back eighteen months later, I had found up to eighty percent improvement, but thirty percent across the board. So it was really effective.
That's fantastic. I mean, that's the sort of positive story that should be shared. That's great. Because it's, you know, this is the starting point, but you then have to think about, well, what am I going to do to deal with that? And that is one of the issues. When people fill in a questionnaire, they want to know what difference it will make. How are you going to use that information? And so following up and showing that improvement is gold. That's fantastic because you can then, you'll get more resourcing too. Because I'll say, oh, look, that worked well, let's keep doing that. That's great.
I have a thing we did, and I'll just go back to something you mentioned about investigating what happened in the accident and working out, you know, how to stop it from happening again. One of the things that I've done is to look at scenarios from an area of what might happen and get them to repeat those in team meetings and pulling those apart. So rather than waiting until something happened, looking at them before it happened. And that was a very effective way of getting teams to talk about safety and really get focused on it.
Yes. Yep. Anything you can do to get them talking is great. Yes?
How did you measure overload?
We use Spectre and Jex's measure, which was developed and published in nineteen ninety-eight and it's one of the most widely used measures. But it's in the report and I can show you the reference for it. It's in the public domain as a research tool. So it's only a simple measure of overload and we'd love to have other measures in there as well, like role ambiguity as well. But it was one of the things that we included. Yep.
Yeah, just on that, I've found that really lovely too, that obviously when your workload's too high, your risk is also higher. Have you encountered from leaders in the organisations that you've worked with, a kind of attitude of cost of doing business is that we can't resource the roles appropriately? Everyone is overloaded? We'll just wear the, you know, the safety incidents?
It's, yes, it's been...
Just pretend they're not happening?
In some of the, hmm, hmm, in some of the less open cultures, yes, we have. And, and there's been the, oh, well, this is just the perception, they think they're overloaded, but they're not really. Look, I don't know, I'm a psychologist. If someone thinks they're overloaded, then it's still going to affect the way they do their work, you know? Something's going on there that we need to address. So it has been one of the areas that's been difficult and, yeah, yeah. And there's still an amount of work there to do and that's, that's what the job is about. So overload is a really interesting topic. The other things, it does get to be a more complicated story because I'm an academic, of course, it's always more complicated. But where people feel they've got more control over their work, where people feel they can voice their concerns, so there's psychological safety, it's okay to speak up about my work, even if I'm overloaded, if I feel like I'm being listened to and I've got control, I can deal with it, that kind of buffers it. So not that I'm suggesting it's okay to overload anyone, but there is a bit of a complex mix around all the things that help people to cope with their workload and cope with what they're, they're dealing with. Also support mechanisms, being able to debrief after an incident happens, having other people even support. So if you're working in healthcare, for example, and you're dealing with an emergency department, there are things that are going to happen and there's always going to be a heavy load on a busy Saturday night in a metropolitan hospital. But managing that in a variety of ways, de-escalation training for the staff, all you can do in terms of security and physical environment changes, training for people in dealing with how you manage the stress of that kind of job. Some emergency departments are looking at mindfulness training, for example, really creative ways of thinking about how do we help people to deal with the kinds of jobs they're doing. So yes, there's lots that can be done. We don't just have to worry about the problems, there is lots that can be done in really practical ways to improve the health and safety at work. And the mental health issues, the, the health and wellbeing, psychological health are coming through very strongly. This is again, just touched the surface of those, but there's, I, I think they're much harder for people to deal with. We can change equipment and deal with a physical issue much more easily, but psychological health issues can often be much more harder for people to talk about, to even report, and for supervisors and managers to understand how to manage. That's often much more challenging for people. Any other questions? Yep?
As a director of a company, do you think that taking emphasis off anti-terrorist or whatever, if I can't get a feeling that's, that's sort of where you're going to put your attention, what sort of indicators would you personally be looking for rather than that?
I would not say stop reporting them, I'd say keep reporting them, keep the focus on them because people understand what a lost time injury is, they understand what a medically treated injury is. But expand, expand the reporting and look at what you're doing. And as a director of a company, if you can show, we are providing training to our people, we have put in place the equipment our people need, we have done whatever we can to control and manage, that's going to be a better story for you should something go wrong. So adding to the leading indicator list, whether you use this tool or not, but thinking about what you're doing in terms of prevention of health and safety incidents in the workplace will strengthen your case about reporting on health and safety. So keep your LTI and MTIFR and everyone feels comfortable then, but add to it. Add to it by saying, this is, these are the steps we are putting in place to improve health and safety or to keep people safe, to prevent injuries and illnesses from happening. And part of the intention for this research was to start the conversation or provide evidence for the conversation about, should there be reporting of health and safety? What should be reported? I don't have the final answer of what should be reported other than let's expand it beyond LTI. So there's ongoing discussions around that and I think it will be a hot topic for the next five years to talk about.
Okay, it sounds like we have a gathering crowd outside. So thank you everybody for attending today and let's thanks Helen again for her efforts to improve our performance.